Mr. Reddick.
Here.
Mrs. Reece.
Here.
Mrs. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Plaskow.
Here.
Mrs. Debo.
Here.
Thank you. We held an executive session after the April 25 meeting to finish a discussion about a legal issue regarding the Wyman's and Spur Alerta. We also called a personnel, uh, executive session on May 4th during personnel to discuss a personnel item. And we had an executive session before tonight's meeting to discuss the pilot with the Reading The upcoming meeting dates are in your agenda and on the sideboard. Tonight, we have a recognition, a couple of recognitions from the BCTC student of the quarter, Mr. Murray, I think is here to present.
All right, unfortunately, our two students are not here tonight. However, I did reach out to their instructor for the BCTC. And I got some few comments, I'll show them with the group. Quinn Ho is in the engineering technology program. His instructor, Mr. Pott, said he's been very hardworking since day one. He's conscientious of his efforts and consistently performs as the best student in their engineering program. He's willing to help others and it's a pleasure to have him on the show. And this was the second time he was selected a student of the quarter. And then we have Sanel Gonzalez, who is in the electronics engineering technology program. His instructor, Mr. Stricker, says his concept knowledge surpassed the class and he took it upon himself to help other students. During this time, he worked to build and program one of our autonomous robots. No doubt, he will continue to exceed expectations. So it's good to hear that both these students are well ahead in their programs and they're offering help to everyone else in their program. So, good news for them. Thank you.
And Mr. Yorki is here to present something to one of our Eagle Scouts.
I'm here tonight to recognize Rehman on behalf of the school district. His Eagle Scout project this year was upgrading our softball batting situation over the softball field, which was previously a grass area with just a net over it this past week. I believe the team was able to get out there once, which before would probably be out of the question because it would have been a five mark. But it's a great upgrade to our facility and it's been privileged to work with you during that time. So here's a, here's an award from the district, as well as a plaque. If you have time, I don't know if you're still doing tennis, right?
Yeah.
We've got a plaque we need to put out there and recognition. You're in the target.
Next on the agenda, we, I, we have Mrs. Fetcho here with us to talk with us about, actually, a new program that's coming to West Reading. And I thought you might enjoy hearing a little bit about the cultural walk that's part of the World Heritage Festival that she spearheaded. So, Ms. Fetcho.
Thank you for having me. I just want to tell you briefly about what we're doing in sixth grade. I'm a sixth grade social studies teacher. Okay. Thank you. And we had taken a project that they had always done and turned it into a more world culture-based. We changed our focus and curriculum from North and South America primarily to a world cultures class in sixth grade. And so last year, we started the World Heritage Festival project where you should introduce presentation. And this year, as a new addition, we're adding the neighborhood cultural walk. So I just want to give you just the general schedule so you see what's happening in these next two weeks. So, May 11th through May 24th, all sixth graders will present their material to their classmates on the culture that they investigated, the country of origin, and then some sort of interactive element regarding their presentation. And then on May 23rd, we're going to celebrate their success. Mr. Miller put together the Seven Wonders tour, so we'll install that in our building and the kids will walk around and see models, scale wonders of the world. And we also have Alex Meixmer Band that's coming. Alex Meixmer is a Grammy nominated, award-winning accordion band player. Last year, Wink was able to donate, sponsor that event. This year, PTA is sponsoring that event. And so is the music association. They gave us extra dollars to have Alex come and do a meet greet for students in addition to playing this year. And what I'm really here to tell you about, though, is our cultural neighborhood walk. I partnered with Love West Reading Group and Kristen Kelly, myself, and Bridget Kozak, another sixth grade teacher, worked very hard to make community partnerships. And so the students will walk on three designated routes and they will stop at these community partners where they will then be, the partners, the businesses will talk to the students a little bit about the culture of their business, the culture of their lifestyle, and engage them in something experiential for them. And to end our walk that day, after they stop at these separate places, the Love West Reading Group has closed down Sixth Avenue for us and Urban Rhythms will do a drum circle presentation. So I hope that if you are free, you will join us that day. We'd love to have everyone be with us. Thank you for your time.
Some of the things that I think Kami has been able to do, one of the things I've mangled, I'm going to call you out, because over the past year, there's really been a connection between the high school and also West Reading in terms of aligning the curriculum. And so I think what Kami and her colleagues have done over at West Reading is really to prepare them for, once they get up to the high school. So I thank you for that partnership that when you were still in the classroom, that you started in reaching over to West Reading and how we're creating that vertical alignment. So I think this is just another example of that. So, thank you. Now, for the main event of what you all have been waiting for. Mr. Boyer is here this evening. We are in budget season. And so, Mr. Boyer has been working diligently with the finance committee and with the board to talk about where we are with finances. And so he is here this evening to present the proposed budget to you.
Yes, we're here, I'm Mark Boyer, I'm the business administrator. We're here to present the proposed final budget for the 1617 school year. So first, I'd like to thank the board. This is the sentiment, this is the waller. We've spent a lot of time and energy and thought processes going through building this budget and it should be, hopefully, a good 1617. So let's, first, um, first slide here is just our mission or vision. And so this is essentially our base building block for whenever we create a budget. This mission and vision not only aligns academics, curriculum, but aligns the whole entire district. So when we start out for budget, we have to make sure we have the mission, the vision, balance, our fiscal responsibility. So we use this as our building block for every budget, every budget season. One of our most important tools that we use is enrollment history projections. So the past two years, we did present this projection slide right here. It's outdated for, I do four years of projections, which is off to your right under the gray area that says projections. One of the most important parts of this is the October 1st box right there. That October 1st is an important date. October 1st is when the Department of Education requires all schools from Commonwealth to present what their enrollment was as of October 1st. So that's actual data. The actual data is crucial to how we build out this projection machine. So we create what's called survival ratio. And that survival ratio is a three-year blended rate from 1314, 1415, 1516 on the percentage change. It's blended together to get, line the average change. And then we apply that to the birthing data that we get from the Department of Health. So we look at the number of births in Wyman's and Spur, West Reading Borough, put them together, do a slight calculation because part of Wyman's and Spur is in the Wilson School District, come up with the number of births that we project out for veterans starting kindergarten, 1617 school year. And we apply the survival ratio to that for every year out. As you can see, when you direct to the bottom, where this tool will always to the right-hand side, we are projecting an enrollment increase. Wyman's is one of those school districts in Burress County for the few that are having enrollment increases as others that are staying the same or declining. So the main purpose of this tool is not only to see or project where we're going to be, but it's also a tool to say, okay, let's apply grades K six to our board adopted classroom policy for class size and take a look, what does our staffing look like for those years? So we, it's a very important tool that helps us with our, our staffing and budget. Budget uncertainties. As every year, there's always budget uncertainties, even heading into the last final moments, going into the budget. And here are some of the key ones. We just spoke about enrollment. It's always an uncertainty. Last year, and over the summer, we had an influx of second graders move into the district. That causes to add a long-term sub for second grade because we had that many students move in. So even though we take a look at projections, projections are only so good when the actual data comes in over the summer. We had to add a teacher. The support staff contract, we're currently negotiating, in negotiations with ASME. We have a, an assumption built into that contract for wages with us. We're still talking economics and in negotiations. Special education, excuse me, special education costs. We never knew who's going to walk through the door, we never know how much that student's going to cost to educate. And that's, that's if you're off the Commonwealth. Charter cycle, charter cycle school expenditures. This is key. Our enrollment actually decreased with number of students in cyber charter schools, but what increased was the cost to educate them. So the, the state derives a formula that says, okay, these are your expenditures, your actual expenditures. Out of your actual expenditures, this is how much you will pay cyber charter school students to attend. So as our enrollment has decreased, our tuition costs have increased. And enrollment decrease has not been, that's great. So we're basically, this in 1617, we are budgeting the same amount for 1516, but for 1617, we'll likely increase, I was thinking 1718, we'll increase that amount. Healthcare increase, 8.5%. That's the increase on, on what we're currently paying now for, for healthcare. So as of, last year was a 3% increase. This year, off of 1516 to 1617, the projection is 8.5%, which is a huge increase compared to where we were. Final numbers come in May 23rd, so hopefully that will drop either a percent or two, it shouldn't go higher. Transportation contract, we're currently in negotiations with our transportation provider and we're still negotiating economics and that contract also. Revenue uncertainties. Changes in the state budget for 1617, we're completely in the dark on this one. For 1516, we know how that went with, with the budget, was it finally completed until April, in which we knew what we were getting as far as our subsidies for 1516. We really have a little bit of an idea of what Governor Wolf is proposing, but what actually transpires are two different things as we move through 1617. So that's a huge uncertainty. Basic education funding revenue formula. So this is a new formula that the state, when they passed the fiscal code, and put into, into play with how they divvy out the basic education funding. A similar formula went through last year with special education. And what it essentially does is it baseline's the revenue. So 1415 is our baseline. It will not go lower than 1415. But for all new monies coming out, it's put through this formula, which is a bunch of different percentages and analytics that the money runs through and then we can get the final result. So, truth be told, we actually got more money using this formula than Governor's original formula that he had passed, which is great. Ready-to-Learn Grant. This was a grant that was brought forth through the corporate administration. It's just another challenge to increase funding through school districts. The reason this is an uncertainty is because every year, we don't know if we're going to get it. And if we do get it, we don't know how much it's going to be. And actually looking at what Governor Wolf is proposing in 1617, it looks like this grant is going to morph into basic education funding. It's probably going to go away. Access funding. Access funding is a drawdown of medical assistance funds that we actually run through our special education costs. We apply it for so much money, we get a percentage of that back to deal with drawdown. We're looking to draw down the majority of those funds in 1617. The overview, where are we right now? Okay, revenue budget right now without a tax increase proposed or without use of any fund balance, we're at $33.4 million revenue budget. Expansion budget is $33.9 million. That leaves a deficit of $575,000 or $30. How are we going to close this gap? And we're going to dive right into it. Let's talk about revenues. So of that $33 million, our local revenues is $27.04 billion, which is 80.56% of our total budget, a huge portion of our budget. Where are our local sources? Real estate taxes, interim taxes, business privilege tax. Anything we taxes, part of this source right here. The big source is real estate taxes. How do we get real estate taxes? Off of our assessed value. Our assessed value, again, like last year and previous year, has decreased. Decreased a small amount, at .021%, which is about $53,000. It's still less tax money than we were getting. So we are proposing a tax increase, a tax increase of .95%. Our app one index is, which we'll limit if we can tax to, is 2.4%. The military at .95% would go from 29.736 to 30.0665. So what does that mean for assessed value of, excuse me, a property assessed at $150,000, the increase would be $42. State sources. Of that $33 million, 5.99 million or 17.63% is from the state. And the bigger contributions are basic ed, special, and ready-to-learn grant. You see there on the slide are our 1516 revenue numbers. That is what we will be getting from the state. We're using those numbers in our 1617 budget because we have no idea of what 1617 is going to bring as far as when the government, or excuse me, the governor, the legislator's going to approve. Retirement reimbursement. We do receive a subsidy from the state for retirement reimbursements, 50% of our expense as the retirement increases, which it is, our expense. Going from 25.84% to 30.03%, we'll get more revenue from that, but it's only derived because our expense went up. Federal sources. $524,000 or 1.56% of our total budget. Great news about this is Title I funding came in, it's a preliminary, preliminary numbers we'll be receiving an increase. But because they're preliminary, we're only going to budget .75% of the increase. So we're a little conservative on this, but that number can change. So we are increasing Title I. We don't have any information here on Title II and Title III, so it's based upon the 1516 allocations. Medical assistance, we spoke about that in an earlier slide. We're going to draw down the majority of that money to help, help budget, or help close the gap. Revenue history. This slide is just a basic history of our revenue budget. Actually, I just want to bring your attention to the far right, 1516. Our projections are bringing in that we're going to be basically right on budget with our revenue. Expansion assumptions. All salaries are budgeted in accordance with employee existing wage agreements except for the ASME contract. We built an assumption in there for that. Medical insurance contract. Excuse me, 8.5%. We spoke about that earlier. It's 8.5% increase where we currently are now. Employee retirement. We spoke about that. 25.84% is where we are right for our retirement percentage. It's going up to 30.03%, it's a 1.19% increase, about $710,000. The net of that is $355,000. And then use of fund balance. We have some unassigned fund balance and assigned fund balance specifically for retirement or piers that we're going to propose using to close the gap. Let's just talk about some personnel changes that are occurring. There's a couple of them. The top one, because of our enrollment projections, we're being, we are projecting that we're going to need an additional kindergarten, or excuse me, elementary school position at the Hills. So that's going to increase our budget. We're going to zero budget for 1617, banking psychologist position, which decreases our budget. We had a couple of resignations which will decrease our budget. We had retirement which will decrease our budget. And then the bottom one is a van driver. That position is currently vacant. We have five positions right now. We typically only fill four, we're full staff, not full staff right now. So we're in, basically, zero budget, that banking van driver position. Some key changes. I just want to focus on the highlighted items there. So raising taxes will give us about $218,000 of additional tax revenue. We're looking to use $292,000 of the committed fund balance for piers and unassigned fund balance at $66,000 we'll be using to draw down. There's two more items on here that I'd like to point out. The use of bond refinancing savings. The board made the wise decision to refinance a bond at the right time, which is going to save us about $153,000 in debt service. And then with the, the Hills project, the ESCO project, we have a guaranteed energy savings of $71,000 that we're also going to be capturing in this budget. So the current, current status, review. We're at $33.4 million revenue, $33.9 in expenditures, $575,000 in deficit. So what we're looking at for the proposed file is a revenue budget of $33,618,000 and an expansion budget of $33,600,000. So we would basically balance the budget. So those three key components in that last slide help balance that budget of $575,000. .95% tax increase and use of committed fund balance for piers and use of unassigned fund balance for, just to close that gap of our regular unassigned fund balance. This chart is an expansion history. We're going to go into a few charts of just kind of where we are and how our expenditures are made up. So I just want you to focus on 1415 here. We had a budget to actual, we had a huge, our actual exceeded our budget and that was because we used committed fund balance to pay for a lease, will actually pay off the lease, purchase a new lawn tractor. We had some curriculum enhancements that we did and then we purchased transportation software. This is a graph that just basically shows total revenue and total expenditures for budget history. The final two years here, there's a gap between our revenue and our expenditures. Last year, we also used fund balance, unassigned fund balance, or projected using unassigned fund balance of $135,000. We don't believe for our projections we're going to need to use that money at all. But then I just may mention that we will be using fund balance again to help close the gap up of the budget. These are just pie charts, basically breaking down our, our expenditures by program. As you can see, 55% of our budget is directed to instruction. So instruction is teacher salaries, all of the supplies used in the classrooms, anything related to students. This is a breakdown of basically where we are by object. So six, over 60% of our entire budget goes to salaries and benefits. It's a huge, huge number. This is just a slide of where our projected ending fund balance should be for 1617. I just want to point out two lines here. Piers will be down to 3.9 million. We are currently at 4.1 million. So using that 272,000, we'll draw that down a little bit. And then unassigned fund balance is at 2.79. We are projecting a very small surplus of $240,000 at the end of 1516 as of right now. That could change. But that money is built into that unassigned fund balance right there. This is a good, a really good chart of kind of where we were for our military history. Just want to direct everyone to the bottom line here. That's where we're proposing our military be at 30.0665. It's a .2816 increase in Mills. It's a .95% increase. Our index is 2.4. The past three years, we went from a 1.7% increase to a 1.5 to a 1% increase. So we're really working hard, the board is working hard to keep that tax increase low. One other key point here is that this proposed tax increase at .95% would be the lowest tax increase since 1999, 2000, or 0%. We're all working very hard to not have large taxes. Real estate tax increase, sorry. This chart, I just want to bring this chart to see what the difference is in the tax revenue. So at .95%, we bring about $213,000. At 2.4%, we bring about $540,000. 2.4 is our tax index, definitely higher than that. Another good key chart. This is a chart of the county village rates in the 18 school districts in Burress County as of 1516. So it's in alphabetical order, it's not in ranking order. I will tell you that Quistown right here is at 29.9543 village rate. We're at 29.7836. Quistown is fifth in the county. When we increase our taxes by .95 to that 30.0665, we will be fifth in the county as far as tax village. Quistown is not projected to increase their tax at all this year. But the key part of this chart right here is this column right here. This is our BEF funding for 1516. I want to draw your eyes down the bottom right-hand corner here. We get 1.3 million from the state. 1.3 million. School district our size, comparable, Salkin Valley School District, 2.55. So there's a good correlation between tax increase and basic education funding.
That's my cue to add something. So, the BEF funding formula that you hear us talking about, it's a basic education funding formula. This has been, if you've been reading, following the media, there's been a change in this. And there have been some, what they call circuit riders, who are retired educators and some board members retired, who are active. We're going across the state and educating people about what this basic education funding formula actually is. And there has been a press in Harrisburg to try and change this so that school districts are more fairly funded. And this is really what, what Mr. Boyer is showing you, the disparity across Burress County. So the circuit riders have been coming to speak with the superintendents, have been going into school districts. And as Mark and I have been working on the budget, we have invited one of the circuit riders to be here during our next school board meeting to just kind of educate us on what goes into this funding formula and how, what can we do as a community, as a school board, in terms of advocacy to start looking at a fair funding formula. So Sandra Miller, Tom Seidenberger is actually our regional circuit rider. He's not available to be here, but Sandra Miller, who is a board member with the Salkin Valley School District up in Lehigh Valley, will be here to, to talk to us and just kind of explain what this basic education funding formula is, as well as some advocacy points in what we can do as a community to start bringing more attention to this. So I thought, as you're looking at this slide, this would be an appropriate time to do a little infomercial for the next school board meeting. I've spoken with her. She's extremely knowledgeable about this and so we look forward to inviting her in to talk with us about that.
Thank you. So it is, it'd be great to have that explained, kind of get more insight into the new formula. There's a lot of factors that go into that formula and it's a little confusing, but it could shed light on to why, maybe why we're at 1.3 versus a higher rate. This slide here is, we spoke about using committed fund balance for, for our piers or our retirement. So right now, we're at $4.1 million in, in that account, or in that, that commitment. We're projecting to use 292,000, bring that down a little bit. If we would use that in compounds over the years, we're looking at basically this full year '21, '22, where we'd start to run out of money for that commitment, we're not adding anything more. So we have a couple of years, hopefully, we're not going to continue this use of using that fund balance, but it is there for us to use as we kind of reach, whenever the state decides to stop, we'll hand down the road and settle on a final number that we're looking at contribution-wise. We're almost there. The peak, right now, the peak percentage is about 33%. We'll be at 30%. It's about two years, we'll peak up and then we'll flatline is what the projection is. But every year we've gone through this, that has gotten further and further out as far as when we get the final number. And that concludes the, the folks' presentation. So, thanks.
What'd you think? Okay, we can move on to committee reports. Mr. Zappos, did you have anything to add to my dance?
Really? All right. Good evening. Again, thank you, Mark, for, for all this. I'm going to report on the finance committee that we have last week, which we discussed in a review of the 2016-17 budget and the fund balance and the .9% tax increase. And again, wow. We also discussed budget transfers for about $337. We discussed the wave grant, the amount of $1,160 for the special Olympics. Again, we reviewed the copier lease analysis. We went through, I think it was five. We went through, I think it was five, was it six different companies? Narrowed it down from amount of paper we're using to amount of copier machines. And we will have a vendor and contract at the second meeting in May. I think we're right there on the last report. So it's a good savings. I think it was about, what, $7,000 savings? 7,300?
2,000 per year.
Per year, okay.
Which is still good.
Which is still good. Got it. That's basically all we discussed. This was the meat and potatoes of it. Oh, yeah.
We had a meeting on May 4th. And under current projects, we discussed the football field fence project. ELA is revising the plans to include the tennis courts, reduce the number of columns, and change the setback of the fence from three feet to six feet. Secondly, we discussed facility storage building. At our last meeting, we had approved going forward with that. Currently, AEM, the architects, they're working on the design and waiting for renderings. AEM expects to have the bid documents prepared to advertise in mid to late July. Tennis court update. There is a meeting this week to discuss storm water...
Last week.
Yeah. To discuss the storm water plan. Turf Track and Field is preparing the bid documents and anticipates advertising the project in early July. It seems that it's a very, very good possibility that the project will be completed by the end of this year. Lastly, in current projects is the district-wide camera upgrade, which we've hit a little bit of a snafu in the high school just because of the age of the building in the 1938 section. It's more of an exterior issue. Currently, all three of the schools, the interior cameras are working and set up. I think, you know, it's more of a delay just in technique. It hasn't added any additional cost to the project. So I think they're just kind of slowly getting through that, and it will get done, it's just taking a little longer. And that wasn't completely unanticipated. There was also a little discussion at the end about the installation of an exterior camera at the Hills by door four. Mr. Cafincelli is going to look into it, and we'll continue to discuss that. Under new business, we had talked about last month, Mrs. Phillips and the Environmental Club wanted to landscape the area by the stairs going down to the turf track. There was a question of who was going to maintain it. They were contacted, and Mrs. Phillips said that the club would be responsible for maintaining the plantings. We had a floor scrubber that was very old, and it broke, and can't be replaced. So at this point right now, we're looking at new scrubbers that are more efficient and can be used to both strip and scrub the floors. This will be a huge savings in time as, right now, they're manually, by hand, stripping the floors. So Mr. Cafincelli is looking at devices that can be transported to all of the schools and that will do both. So it would be a huge savings in time. Right now, we're looking at maybe $8,000 to $10,000. But he'll get multiple pricing for that. Another discussion was the sound system at the football field. The current system is antiquated, and we're going to look at replacing the system with new outdoor speakers and a wireless microphone. Mr. Cafincelli is in the process of getting quotes. Right now, it looks to be around $8,000, which seems to be the magic number. We discussed possibly looking to get some donations from some of the teams that use the field. We'll continue to discuss this at the next meeting. The last thing, and this was sort of the bigger issue that we talked about in the meeting is, and as we've discussed often, the age of this building and the problems that we have with our controls on our HVAC system. The controls at the high school, one of the main control components died and cannot be replaced because of its age. So that control is an old NRG. It was the company that maintains that control. The question is, do we repair that? Or do we go with Trane? Because we already have some controls that were put in. And Trane can put a Band-Aid on this until we can delve deeper into doing this remodel in the next couple of years of our whole system. Mr. Cafincelli's been working with Trane. They're pretty confident that they can get it fixed. As it stands right now, it's working. It just has to be run manually. So someone has to sit in the control room and while people are in the school, and manually control the temperature. So clearly, that's not optimal. So I don't know if you have an update on that? Is this was last week? Are you still...
We're still reviewing options. We should have a recommendation for it.
Okay. Lastly, we also discussed Flattery Field and kind of did a bit of a wish list of things that we'd like to get improved over there. One is there's a ripple in the track in lane four. I think once track is over, they're going to try to roll that out. It wouldn't be that big of a deal, and hopefully it solves the problem. Further and kind of greater issues there, there's some real parts of the fence that need to be fixed. Also, the lines need to be repainted. And there was some talk about possibly providing heating and cooling in the locker rooms there. Again, this is all a wish list. We'll continue looking at this, but we are discussing it. So we'll keep moving on with that. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Chase. Quick here, Mrs. Waller.
We talked about, they are adding another book for the eighth grade reading list. We had decided on it last month, but there was a little bit of overlap from, I think, the sixth grade program. So Mrs. Waller, over the summer, is going to meet with representatives for K through 12 to kind of put together one giant reading list so that there's some continuity among the different schools. The curriculum and textbook cycle has been completely updated, and departments are going to start curriculum revisions over the summer. We talked about the work outside of the contract hours for teachers. The overall hours will remain the same from previous years, but some will shift where some departments didn't quite use all their hours. Other departments have been given those hours that kind of need the extra hours for the summer. But no change in financial need for that. The three-hour delay plan, which is not a substitute for the two-hour delay plan, and we're going to vote on that tonight. They put together plans for two-hour delay, three-hour delay, and also early dismissals. So if that is approved tonight, then we will go ahead and start relaying that information to parents so that we can start it up next year as needed. We are going to, they would like to change Summer Reading Academy to just Summer Academy, which will allow us to have more flexibility and provide students with support in both math and reading as opposed to just being a reading program. There'll be no extra cost by doing that. So, seems like a no-brainer. And then the ESSA Stakeholder Work Group. Mrs. Waller has been selected by the Pennsylvania Department of Education to participate on the ESSA Stakeholder Work Group with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Their four focus work groups are assessment, accountability, educator certification, and educator evaluation. There'll be three additional meetings scheduled between now and October. And their goal is to use 1617 as the transition period. And then ESSA will go into effect for 2017-18 school year. That's all.
The technology committee met May 5th. And we, at the junior/senior high school one-to-one initiative, we reviewed that, which included technical upgrades, updates, repairs, year-end updates. And it was also noted that we had a 100% success rate with the AP Spanish exam online. We then reviewed technology at West Reading and the Hills. And it was noted that we're opening discussion with the teachers to look at matching curriculum. There was a meeting scheduled to obtain teacher feedback. And we're looking at applying lessons learned at the high school to discuss how we go further at those two schools with the vision before actual implementation. There were updates provided on infrastructure and looking at the, throughout the building for growth. Also, updates on continuing to make district-wide website improvements with the goal of increasing district communication and providing better user experience. Under technical support, it was noted that they were close to filling the technician position, which has not been filled. Okay. Beginning to interview for college interns for next year. Also reviewed the audio recordings, which we've gotten some very positive feedback. And also, Mr. Ochs added another microphone to assist with hearing the voting. We're meeting with the teachers to demonstrate... Oh, lastly, we showed a teacher demonstration of the iPads at the Hills where they were utilizing Kahoot, allowing them to do an interactive answer of multiple choice questions for their Colonial Days lesson plan. That's it.
Personnel, Mr. Painter?
Thank you very much. The Personnel Committee met on May 4th at 12 noon. I would direct your attention to the items that were in your agenda, the personnel items. In addition, we did discuss the county service agreement for our subsidies. We did authorize the administration to go forward and further investigate that matter. What they're doing, I expect you'll see an item on our agenda next month for county services. It's also a discussion item on the county facilities agenda. Any comments? Keep on going. We have a number of policies here for first read. First, we have 626 and the attachments. These are required policies relative to requirements of the Uniform Grant Guidance. It's more or less how we deal with the federal government, I believe, in connection with grants. They're very detailed requirements. The bottom line, these are all required to deal with the federal government and grants. In addition, they are consistent with our current policy procedures and magical policies to our procedures. You're also going to see a couple of related policies here. The first is policy 820... I'm sorry, 808, which relates to food services. Again, the same issue dealing with the Department of Agriculture. The other policy that is somewhat related is 827 relative to conflicts of interest. This discusses a situation where a board member or a municipal employee has some kind of relationship with a potential vendor, and more or less prohibits that relationship from leading that vendor to obtaining the contract request. Again, I believe this also kind of derives from 626 and is kind of connected to that relative to dealing with the federal government. The final policy is number 823, nalzone. We're adopting this policy. We did get a policy for PSPA with recommended provisions. We've also discussed it with our school nurse and also with our school doctor to ensure that everything is in place for us to administer this drug. More or less, this is a, it counteracts the effects of opiates. So again, we feel it's important to have it available to our school nurse and also, and really just trained personnel. There's required training for administering nalzone, and the individuals who have access to it will receive the appropriate training. In addition, we discussed some other policies. 123.1, related to irisholastic athletic coaches. 218, related to student discipline. And 233, related to suspension and expulsion. You will likely see some changes to those policies next week.
Thank you very much, Mr. Painter. Okay, I have the ad hoc committee report. On May 2nd, we had the last scheduled ad hoc meeting. Mr. Brunner, Wyman Singh Borough Council member, attended the meeting to share the borough's position on Mr. Rodriguez's proposed plan for the reapportion of Wyman Singh Area School District to a regional plan for electing school board members. The Wyman Singh Borough Council passed a resolution opposing the plan, and Mr. Brunner provided a copy of the resolution to the committee. The remainder of the meeting was used to review the report and finalize the recommendations. The report reviews the timeline of events leading up to the creation of the committee, community input, as well as election data for regional and at-large districts in Berks County from 2003 to 2015, and Wyman Singh Area School District's school director primary election data from 2003 to 2015. The committee finds that there is a perception that the interests of West Reading are not represented by the Wyman Singh Area School Board of Directors. However, we believe that through past actions, West Reading is indeed represented as an integral part of the district. The committee senses that this has been a longstanding issue since the merging of West Reading and Wyman Singh School Districts, and there have been hurt feelings between residents of both boroughs. Our goal as a committee is to bring our communities together, not further divide them. We don't believe that changing the electoral system will remedy these issues, and it is not the most effective way to address the problem. It is apparent from the data that qualified West Reading residents who run for school board can be successful in elections. However, there is a lack of interested candidates within West Reading. The committee believes that the board needs to begin with a grassroots effort to educate potential school board candidates in the election process first before fully disrupting our current electoral system. It is important to allow all of our voters the option to choose from a large pool of qualified candidates who they feel best represent our community as a whole. It is the recommendation of the ad hoc committee to address the lack of West Reading residents on the board by developing a comprehensive program designed to identify candidates for school board, support residents who choose to run, and provide resources to them throughout the electoral process. These resources would include a webpage on the district website that outlines the timeline and deadlines for running, links to online resources such as the Pennsylvania School Board Association website, Berks County Elections website, links to filing petitions, and seminars with current board members for Q and A about running for school board and the role and responsibilities of school directors. The committee also recommends monitoring the board's outreach efforts to get more West Reading residents to run by reviewing the efficacy of the efforts after the municipal elections in 2017 and 2019. Changes will be made to improve the outreach based on the board's review. Wyman Singh Area School District offers an excellent education to the children of both West Reading and Wyman Singh. It is nationally ranked, it is nationally ranked by several organizations. And last year, Wyman Singh Area School District performed above the state average on every PSSA test and every grade level that was tested. The board is very reluctant to change an election plan for school directors that has been able to see boards that support such a successful district. The board takes such a huge change to the plan of electing school directors very seriously and feels that an effort to encourage more residents to run and to provide comprehensive support to those residents should be tried before we disrupt a system that has produced very capable boards and an excellent school district for the entire community. So that report in its entirety is in the board packet. All the supporting documents of all of our research is also there. And I would like to thank Mrs. Filer personally because the stack of documents was about two inches thick, and she had to scan it all and label it and organize it for the report. So she was very supportive to me and the committee last week when I put all that on her lap. So thank you very, very much. And I have Berks County Intermediate Unit. I was unable to attend the meeting, so I don't have a report. So I'll move on to BCTC, Mr. Painter.
Thank you. We had a meeting on Wednesday, April 27th at Reading Area Community College. Of note is that we reported that all of the 16 sending districts did approve the budget. So next month, BCTC will likely approve that budget formally. So thank you. And it was interesting to note that we met at Reading Area Community College and we toured the mechatronics classrooms, I guess you would call it, which is kind of amazing. Mecatronics is, from my perspective, a combination of robotics, computers, science. I mean, it really is fantastic. And we took a presentation from the college, and they informed us all of the programs available at Reading Area Community College that tie into BCTC and even high schools to a lesser extent. That allowed me to start in your education at a very, actually no cost, getting college grads for no cost. And there are many, many programs available. And let's see what they need to add.
Thank you. Berks County, do you have anything to add?
We have not had a meeting, so I have no report.
Wyman Singh Area Education Initiative Foundation?
Just one item to note on the agenda that's to vote tonight. It already was mentioned with the grant for the Spark and Challenge for our Wyman Singh Education, Special Education students for one thousand... for our Wyomissing Education, Special Education students for $1,160. And as far as upcoming meetings, the wave board meets tomorrow. There's a scholarship celebration on Wednesday at the 11th. And one last push for the principal's party toast on May 13th. And it's still online and it's still not too late to register.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment tonight? Could you please sit up to the microphone and state your name and address?
Hello, I'm Mark Gofford, 1410 Hill Road. I've raised some safety issues, Wi-Fi radiation for the last three years. And I'm not really satisfied with the actions that are being taken place. Ms. Riley's been responding to my letters, but I'm just wondering if the rest of the board is aware of the questions and the answers being given. Are you involved at all or is it just one person who's still? You stated that you were committed to keeping up with the latest research and development, understanding of Wi-Fi and possible health issues. And I'm wondering who's doing that because I gave you current research that shows that Wi-Fi causes production of free radicals in your cells. And this is known to cause all sorts of problems like cancer, aging, and so forth. So who's doing this checking of the current research because that's an obvious red flag that we should be very worried about. Two years ago, the board said that they agreed that we should measure the strength of the radiation of the fields in our classrooms. It was handed off to one of your people and it was basically blocked. So no measurement has ever been done. Once again, I want to offer, we have equipment. I'm willing to do it myself, no cost to the board. We can measure what the levels are. Perhaps we'll find there's no problems. Perhaps we'll find there's an issue. And once we have some information, we can actually do something about it. At this point, I think we're just putting our heads in the sand and hoping it adjusts a little bit. I'd appreciate if we could get a response from the board regarding these issues. Safety, current R and D, and secondly, can we measure what's going on in the school? One last issue, we're going to be increasing the taxes. Coincidentally, about 75% of that is going to go to maybe more iPads for middle school. I think that we've not shown the benefits of the iPads. In fact, all our PSSAs are going downhill very quickly. I don't know if it's related to the iPads, but it is a big impact on the schools. So if you can't prove that it's good for the students, the research has not shown it, why should we rush into doing more farther downstream for the younger kids? And tonight I heard that we're going to, we have a vision for doing it also in the grade school, which I think is crazy, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Under curriculum and technology, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following curriculum and technology items numbered one through four.
May I have a motion, please? Second? Is there any discussion? Mrs. Filer, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Glassler.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Zilkowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mrs. Redner.
Yes.
Mine, yes.
Under finance and facilities, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following finance and facility items numbered one and two.
Can I have a motion, please? Second? Is there any discussion?
So I just have two questions, maybe Mr. Board can answer this. The surplus that we have from this year, is there any way to use that money to alleviate the tax increase and the deficit?
Actually, we have a little bit. So we did put that into unassigned fund balance. So I mentioned in that last liner, the fourth or fifth last slide. So we actually did put that $240,000 in unassigned fund balance. So we are using essentially $370,000 of fund balance to keep that tax rate as low as we possibly can.
And then, I'm sorry, one more question. With the state budget unknown, my only concern is we can't undo a tax increase. And I know that puts us in a predicament because who knows when the 16, 17 budget will be approved and we have expenditures that need to be taken care of now. But I just wanted to put that out there and see if anybody else has any comments or suggestions.
It's actually a great question. So amongst other school districts, now that we're comparing ourselves to two other school districts, there has been a great discussion about what to use as far as to put in the budget for revenue for the state budget part. So the majority of the school districts are using 15, 16 numbers because it's more conservative. You make a good point. If we do get an increase, and increase is significant, you can't undo a tax increase. So there was about two school districts that were using 16, 17 numbers and they're fairly large districts. So, but the majority is, we just feel more comfortable at this point not doing that because if that money doesn't come to fruition, then we don't tax. To what we're taxing at now, we're going to be in a revenue deficit then.
Mrs. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Glassler.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Zilkowski. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mr. Redner.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mine, yes.
The following finance and facility items are for discussion, number three through 10. Are there any questions? Moving on to personnel and policy, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following personnel and policy items numbered one through nine.
Can I have a motion, please? Second? Is there any discussion? Mrs. Filer, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Glassler.
Yes.
Mr. Zepos.
Yes.
Mrs. Zilkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Mr. Redner.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Riley. Mine, yes.
On behalf of the school board, I would like to thank Dr. Kuhn for the two years he has given the hills. We wish him much success at Upper Marion. Thank you.
It's the battle of the mites. And we also, as an administrative team, Dr. Kuhn wished to thank you for your years of service. We wish you well as you move onto Upper Marion and ensure that you will have a positive influence as you walk the halls of Upper Marion as you do at the hills. Our community thanks you for your service and services.
I've only heard positive words about Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Evans. So thank you very much for your work with the district. And I believe Mr. Arns wants to say something.
Just a quick word. Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Thank you, Mrs. Centec. Thank you to all the school board members. I just want to express my appreciation for supporting the Information Technology Department's internship program. The technical and the soft skills that Kyle, Aaron, and our mentor have developed while working here have prepared them well for their professional careers. I was able to attend their graduation ceremony Saturday morning and it was a real pleasure to hear them all say what a great experience they had while here at the Wyomissing Area School District. I also feel it's important to acknowledge the caliber of students that the Penn State Berks campus is preparing for us. And honestly, I look forward to continuing our relationship with them and utilizing the internship program again next year. So thank you. Much appreciated.
And we also would like to recognize Mr. Lance Palmer, who is in the audience with us this evening. He is the latest member of.
Do you have to stand up?
Yeah, you do have to stand up. And so he is our new technology systems technician. He's taking the place of Mr. Hennessy, who had resigned from the district. And so we want to welcome Mr. Palmer to the Wyomissing Area School District.
And we need to also, are there any questions? I looked at the agenda and wondered whether, are there any additional questions on the policies or discussion items? Okay, Mrs. Riley.
Is there any old business? Any new business? Any updates? Oh, sorry.